Could I have your attention, please? We'll be starting up shortly. Good evening and welcome to the Lowell Planting Board for March 4th, 2024. The first matter on the agenda would be the approval of the minutes for our last meeting. That was February 22nd, 2024. Excuse me. Any board members have any comments or corrections for the minutes?
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion to approve the February 22nd minutes as submitted.
I second the motion.
Motion made and all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Chair, those minutes have been approved. Moving along tonight, we have three public hearings. The first one on the agenda is a site plan review and a special permit for 55, 75, and 77 Phoenix Avenue. Phoenix Ave Realty LLC has applied to the Lowell Planting Board to demolish the existing structures and construct three manufacturing garages totaling 53,438 square feet long with parking, landscaping, and drainage work. The subject property is located in the Light Industrial Zoning District. The proposed work requires site plan review approval from the Planting Board per Section 11.4 for construction of a non-residential building greater than 10,000 square feet. Special permit approval from the Planting Board per Section 5.2.3 for construction near wetlands, and special permit approval per Section 6.1.10 to increase the minimum curb cut. May we hear from the applicant, please?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and good evening to all. For the record, my name is John Geary of Geary &amp; Geary, LLP, 32 Church Street, Lowell, Mass. I'm here tonight representing the applicant, Phoenix Ave Realty LLC. With us tonight, we have Ed Kirby. Ed is one of the principals of the LLC. We have Jim Henley and Troy Sterns from Civil Design Consultants. We have Angie Verge, our landscape designer, and Jack Sullivan, our architect. As the chairman mentioned, this application involves requests for a site plan review pursuant to 11.4 and a request for a special permit pursuant to Section 5.2.3 of the city zoning ordinance in order to redevelop 55, 75, and 77 Phoenix Ave into three new commercial buildings for the primary use as storage for our industrial equipment and any associated office space. There are currently three buildings on the site. Those buildings will eventually be demolished to make way for the three new buildings. The subject properties are located in the Light Industrial Zoning District. The lots contain approximately 10 acres of land, just slightly over 10 acres of land, and there's a significant amount of wetlands on the site. As I said, the site presently consists of three buildings. The first building, as you approach the site from Rogers Street, is 55 Phoenix Ave. That building is used as a movie studio currently. The next building along Phoenix Ave at 75 Phoenix is vacant and is currently being retrofitted for use by the applicant. And the building to the rear of the property is identified as 75 Phoenix Avenue, and that's a big commercial building that has several garage bays that open in the front in the rear of the property. That's currently being used for truck and auto repair purposes. Ed Kirby and his brother Mike are also the owners of Atlantic Millwrights, which has its principal office located in North Reading, Mass. They purchased this property on Phoenix Ave back in November with the intent to expand some of their operations into this site. And as I said, the primary use, the primary intent for the use is as storage facilities for industrial equipment. So eventually, those three buildings, existing buildings, will be torn down to make way for a phased approach of the new buildings. Staff comments provide a pretty good roadmap as to the proposal and any concerns that the city has. So I'll take a few minutes and I'll go through those comments. The first four comments are essentially factual, so picking up on comment number five. Jim will address the stormwater in more detail, but Jim and his team have been working with the city's stormwater team, and we are confident that this project will meet or exceed the local and state stormwater requirements for the proposal. Comment number six. In an abundance of caution, we requested a special permit in order to exceed the curb, maximum curb cut in the Light Industrial Zoning District. As you know, if you've been out to the property, there's no curb cut on the site right now. It's wide open, so there is no need for that special permit. It's a pre-existing condition. Comment number seven notes that the proposed landscaping will be a significant improvement to the site. There's no doubt that having this site professionally landscaped will be a vast improvement to the site. Angie will go through the landscape plan in good detail in a few minutes. Comment number eight mentions the swept path analysis plan that we submitted. So that plan, although it looks like a lot of scribbling, demonstrates to the board that the fire trucks and the tractor-trailers that will need to access the site can access the site and maneuver through the site without any issue. Comment number nine states that the proposed use is an allowed use as of right in the Light Industrial District. I'd also mention that except for the site plan review tonight and the request for the special permit, the proposal is zoning compliant. We don't need any relief from the zoning board. However, because of the proximity to the wetlands, we were required to go before the Conservation Commission. We were before that commission last Wednesday requesting notice of intent and that an order of conditions be issued. The commissioners loved the plan and the proposal that was before them. They had absolutely no concern with the request to build within the 50-foot no-build zone. So a portion of the rear building, and Jim will go through this in detail, is in the 50-foot no-build zone. Conservation Commission had no concerns considering the past and the current condition of the site and the issues that this site has presented from a conservation perspective over the years. So ultimately, the commissioners voted unanimously to issue its standard order of conditions. Comment number 10 mentions that the redevelopment will be completed in a phased approach. That's certainly the applicant's intent. It's a large build-out. There are existing tenants on the site, so the full build-out will take about three years to complete. Comment 11 speaks to the proposed vegetative border between the rear of the building and the wetlands. Again, Angie will review that with the board when she goes over the landscape plan. Comment number 12 speaks to a letter that the board members received from Priscilla Hilliard. Priscilla is in a buttock to the rear of the property on Wentworth Avenue. So her concerns were noise level and basically noise emanating from the existing building at 75 Phoenix Ave. As I said, it's a large building with several garage bays, doors open on the front and the back of the building, so the doors basically remain open during working hours, and there is noise coming from there. I explained to Ms. Hilliard that that's not what the repurpose of this property will be. She thought that we were just building a bigger building in the rear of the property that was going to have the same use. So I explained that whatever is being built there is going to be an enclosed building, and it will actually act as a noise buffer between this property and the residential properties to the rear of the property. So she understood that. She relayed to me that based on that, she had no concerns about the redevelopment. I believe that she sent an email to DPD staff, but I'll let Dylan confirm that. Comment 13 and 14, both the staff and the economic development team expressed their support of the project considering the significant improvement in the current conditions of the site. We would agree that it's a vast improvement. Comments 15 and 16 are from the city's transportation engineer, and they raise a couple of concerns. Liz suggests that the applicant keep customers and visitors to the site out of the courtyard area so that there's no conflict between the large trucks maneuvering in that area and any customers or visitors. So this is definitely the applicant's intent. Any visitor or customer parking will be along the frontage of Phoenix Ave in front of the proposed two buildings there and out of the courtyard area. Liz also suggests that we consider removing two parallel parking spaces that are along the drive aisle going towards the rear of the site near the courtyard. Our calculations indicate that we need all 59 parking spaces that we show on the site plan, so we really can't get rid of these two spaces. However, we would certainly be happy identifying these spaces as employee parking only so that there's no conflict between customers and visitors and trucks accessing the courtyard area. And Jim can explain, show that area on the site plan when he goes through his remarks. The last few comments are from the environmental planner for the city and relate to a past environmental condition at 75 Phoenix Ave. So there was a fire in that building a few years ago that caused the environmental situation. The applicant, during its due diligence phase, during the purchase of the property, had commissioned a Phase 1 and a Phase 2 environmental site assessment. The results of those assessments revealed that the matter has been closed out. There's no need for any further evaluation or testing. However, the applicant has retained a licensed site professional in order to assist with the build-out of the site and prepare a soils management plan when that is appropriate, when the time is appropriate. So we've also submitted a letter dated February 20th from Geological Field Services, the LSP that is hired for the project, which we believe satisfies the environmental planner's concerns here. And I believe I saw an email late this afternoon that indicated that she was satisfied. So with that, I'll turn the presentation over to Jim, and he'll go through his technical review of the site. Thank you.
You may.
Sure. Thank you.
Okay.
Good evening. My name is Jim Henley with Civil Design Consultants out of Andover. So we're the project civil engineer. We've been involved with the project since roughly about a year, give or take. We started our survey work maybe in May of last year, performed the survey, went to conservation for an INRAD so that we had the wetland limitations locked down before we began our design work. Tonight, what I'd like to do is kind of walk you through the existing conditions, tell you a little bit about the proposed conditions, what we're proposing on site, and then just kind of summarize where we stand with the other city departments in the other reviews. So the first sketch I provided, which is the ortho photo with the red property line along the perimeter of it, that kind of shows you the existing conditions. So we're at 55, 75, and 77 Phoenix Avenue, approximately 300 feet south of Route 38 in the Light Industrial Zoning District. The total, there's three lots. In total, it's approximately 10.2 acres. We have 495 feet of frontage on Phoenix Ave and approximately 55 feet of frontage way across the wetland on Wentworth Ave. There's currently three buildings out there. In total, there's about 3,700 square feet of office and about 29,000 square feet of what we call industrial garage between the three buildings. So you can see from the plan and from the ortho photo that really is an industrial use, garage, storage, shipping. There's a lot of larger shipping containers on site that come back and forth daily with the tractor-trailers. Currently, there's about 3.8, almost four acres of this degraded, disturbed area. And what that would be would be like the rooftops and then all of the compact gravel that's been down probably for 40 years since they started working the site. John mentioned that we have a handful of resource areas on site, which we do. Of the 10 acres, approximately 5 and 1/2 is actually wetland. Then we have the city's 50-foot no-build, 75-foot no-septic. That doesn't come into play because we're on SOR. We have a 100-foot wetland buffer. And then we actually have a floodplain. And so if you were to look at the flood insurance rate maps, you'd see that a portion of the site is within the base flood elevation, which is elevation 126. When we did our survey last summer, the results were that the actual floodplain was different than how it's shown on the map, and it's actually located more or less at the toe of the slope within the wetland area. So none of the work that we're proposing is going to have any impact to the storage volume that is available in the floodplain. To confirm this, we went to conservation. They confirmed it, but we also filed what's called a letter of map amendment with FEMA, and that was issued in December of last year. I'll tell you a little bit about the stormwater management. I know that's not necessarily your overview, but there's nothing out there right now, right? Like, if you look at that site, there's literally no catch basins, there's no treatment, everything kind of runs off out into the wetlands, and we're going to make quite an improvement to that. So what we're proposing tonight is a phased approach to redevelopment, to redevelop the site. Phase 1 would be existing building number 75, and we're actually rehabbing that now as we speak. And that's the furthest building along Phoenix Ave, furthest away from 38. The next step would be number 55, which is the existing building closer to 38. That's proposed to be 14,000 square feet. We'd then head out back, and we'd build the biggest of the three proposed buildings, which is 24,500 square feet, and we'd circle all the way back to what they're actually rehabbing right now at number 75 with 15,000 square feet. So the design of the site had to contend with a couple of things. First and foremost, we have, the use requires a 67-foot tractor-trailer. So there's limitations on the turning movements of a tractor-trailer of any size, but specifically that size, it requires a pretty broad range of turning movements. We also needed to be able to maintain the existing buildings as we progress through the phasing. And so that kind of dictated how we approached the design, where the buildings are set, how big the buildings are. So what we're proposing to do on the surface is replace all the existing degraded hard-packed gravel in pavement area with either new pavement and/or landscaping. So currently on site, there's about 3.8 acres of this degraded area. We're proposing to reduce that down to 3.3. So we actually have a slight reduction in impervious surface on this site, and that allows us to make some specific provisions for stormwater. We also needed to look at this from, John did a good job of indicating one of the comments from the town, which was relative to the two parking spaces. We wanted to segregate pedestrians as they walk through the site, as well as passenger cars from the tractor-trailers that are going to be there regularly as well. So you can see on the site plan, it's on sheet C3. We basically have half of our parking, or about 2/3 of our parking, along the frontage of Phoenix Avenue, and then about 1/3 toward the rear associated with 77 Phoenix Ave.
If you were to look at sheet 3, kind of see the basic idea of, you know, if you're coming in to either work or visit, you've got a substantial parking along the front of the road. Stormwater system's going to be greatly enhanced. We're going to meet all the local and state stormwater regulations. We'll have a system of catch basins, manholes, pipes, recharge chambers, eventually leading out to a storm scepter before any flow meets the wetlands. So we're basically going to provide less flow into the wetlands. We're going to retain more stormwater on site, and whatever flow does go out to the wetlands is going to be treated. Where none's treated now, and it'll be treated to a level that's consistent with what's required for the, to meet the stormwater standards. Angie will get into a little bit more of the detail on the landscaping, but we are proposing a pretty significant improvement to what's out there now. We're proposing 20 trees and plus or minus 40 shrubs. So the improvements on site, just to kind of wrap that up, we're really cleaning up an old, degraded, poorly maintained site. We're stabilizing the degraded area. We have a state-of-the-art stormwater management system. We have a reduction in the amount of stormwater that comes off the site, and the use is consistent with the underlying zoning. So where we stand right now is John walked through the three review letters that we did get from the town. We don't take any exception with any of the comments. We'll work with whatever town department that may have any remaining issues to address those. We're also working with the Lowell Regional Wastewater. I went back and forth with them a couple of times today, specific to stormwater. They had a couple of comments. I believe we have that addressed. If they have any further comments, we'll move forward and address those. And as John mentioned, we were fortunate to get conservation approval last Wednesday night. So I think we've put the application together. We've addressed the comments that we've gotten so far, and we're in a good position for you tonight. So with that said, I'd introduce Angie to come up and walk you through the landscaping plan.
My name is Angie Verge with Angie Verge Landscape Design in Carlisle. I am a certified landscape designer and state-certified horticulturist, and I prepared the landscape plan for 55 Phoenix Ave. The main goal of the landscape plan was to provide a net ecological benefit to the wetland resource area while adding functional and aesthetic benefits to the property and the neighborhood. The main goal is to plant more shade trees and increase the tree canopy on site. Currently, the only trees on site are in the existing perimeter that borders the wetland. We're proposing the addition of 29 native landscape-sized trees, both evergreen and deciduous to the property. I'm defining the native region as the northeastern United States. The city requires one tree per 2,000 square feet of parking, and we will have over two times that at 2.3 trees per 2,000 square feet of parking. The proposed site will have 140,000 square feet of total impermeable surface and 24,500 square feet of green space, reflecting 17%, and the city requirement is 5. We plan to introduce vegetative buffers between the parking and paved areas and the wetland resource area. We will revegetate the disturbed areas with native trees, shrubs, and metal plants through native seed mixes and live plants. The plan also proposes to provide an attractive planting at the property entrance, introducing shade and flowering trees to provide much-needed curb appeal to Phoenix Ave. There are also lawn areas designated for snow storage. These are located in some lawn areas along the perimeter, and there is some boulders that are being proposed behind, on the back of the lawn to prevent any excessive snow load closer to the resource area. And that's what I have put together, and if you have any questions or comments, I welcome those. Thank you. And now Jack will be coming up to talk about the architecture. Thank you.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, board members. For the record, Jack Sullivan, Gavna Sullivan Architects, Warren Street, Lowell. There's not much more to say. There's existing three buildings. Each building has exceeded its shelf life, not worthy of any type of trying to correct them. So my clients, Atlantic Millwright, have opted to construct the state-of-the-art industrial buildings. They are pre-engineered buildings with, you got that up, Dylan? Pre-engineered buildings with foam veneer. Each building is 14,000 square feet on number 55 with 10%, 1,400 square feet of accessory office space. Number 75 is 15,000 square feet with 1,500 square feet of accessory office space. And 77 is 24,000 square feet with 2,400 square feet of office space. Again, my clients are going through quite a redevelopment of this entire site. So I'd be happy to answer any questions.
So I don't know if you had a chance to actually look at that video, but it really gives us a very good sense of what the finished product will look like in this case, and it's a valuable tool. But ultimately, our proposed use of this site is consistent with other uses along Phoenix Ave. It's consistent with uses allowed in the Light Industrial Zoning District. Ultimately, once this site is fully developed, we are going to have less impervious materials than what currently exists. We're going to have a professionally landscaped site that takes into consideration the border and wetlands, and we're going to have a site that's subject to stormwater permitting, which is not the case as the site presently exists. So we feel that we meet all of the requirements for a site plan review and issuance of the special permit. We respectfully request approval this evening, but we're happy to answer any questions or address any concerns that the board may have. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. So at this point in time, I'll open it up to the public for anybody who'd like to speak in favor of this project. Let's see, as Mr. Geary did indicate, we did receive a letter from Priscilla Hilliard. She did have some concerns about what was presently on the site and how the property would be affected. And then we did receive a follow-up email that she sent to Dylan, one of our staff members for planning and development, and she indicated in that email that she spoke with Attorney Geary and that she was informed that the garages will be for storage facilities. Therefore, I no longer have any concern with the new use of the building. So we did receive that letter, and we have that on our file. And so anybody want to speak in favor of the project? In favor? In favor? Hearing none? Anybody like to speak in opposition? In opposition? In opposition? In opposition? Hearing none? At this point in time, I'll turn it over to any board members have any questions.
Mr. Chairman, if I may?
Sure, Mr. Fisher.
First of all, this is really, it's an opportunity to improve the site. I mean, it's typical of the years that it was developed, what we saw happen in industrial sites, and obviously, anything we can do to improve the aesthetics of the site. It's funny, I was out there on Sunday morning, and it's absolutely, I had to take a second look, and I was taking pictures. It's just numerous amount of cars going down Phoenix Ave and accessing Hanaford Grocery Store from that back entrance right across from the site.
As I do three times a week.
Oh, sorry. You avoid being on Rogers Street. I had no idea that was going on, and I was like, what is going on? Because I parked right in front of the site on the street, Sunday morning. I figured I'm going to be alone out there, and oh my God, I was in the way. So I honestly didn't realize that. So I think it's going to be a nice improvement from just, you know, the streetscape of what's planned for the landscaping. Obviously, the buildings are tired looking. This actually was a great photo to illustrate what you were saying about the neighbor in the back. Right now, you can see all the, the trail is back here. That's actually going to be a building. So I think that's a huge improvement. Could you just walk through, you did mention about pedestrian safety within the site for conflicts with, it sounds like there'll be a fair amount of vehicles going through the site, and you do have the office buildings. And so I know where the two parallel parking spots are, and you've got, it looks like a connection or walkway to the a connection or walkway to the rear building, and you talk about handicap accessibility. If somebody could just walk at, just, just really for the benefit of even the board, just to kind of envision your circulation from a pedestrian standpoint as it relates to potential conflicts with the vehicles going through the site. And Attorney Gary, as you said, you had no problem. We made that restricted those two parallel parking spots to employees only.
Employee only, absolutely. Yeah, makes sense.
Yeah. And my apologies, so I, occasionally this happens, but I do battle some nosebleeds from time to time, and I may have to exit if I do. Don't take it personally.
Okay. So yeah, so as I mentioned, trying to segregate the, the parking that's going to be for the workers as well as any visitors was like a paramount design concern that we had, and we wanted to make sure that we did that. But so the basic idea here, though, is that these front facades, which were shown so well in that video, you could see that, that we have eight, 16, 24, 25 parking spaces along this area, 23 parking spaces. Each entrance will be equipped with handicap accessible ramps, and then there'll be a handicap accessible, van accessible space on either side of those, right? So we look at how many spaces are there, and then we're providing sufficient amount of handicap accessible space to satisfy that requirement. But again, the idea was generally to keep any kind of passenger vehicles, definitely pedestrians, out of this big courtyard. So if you were to look at that turning template plan, as John indicated, you know, it looks like a bowl of spaghetti with lines everywhere, but what it's indicating is that we have sufficient area to, for these 67-foot-long vehicles to back in, maneuver, pull out, make the turn, come in and come out safely. What we don't want to do is have anybody that has, that's not familiar with the operations of the site be back in this area. So we've really limited the amount of parking that we, that we have out here to just five behind 55 and seven behind 75. So the thought being that if, if it was warehouse workers or people involved in removing materials off the larger trucks, they're going to be more familiar with the operations, and these would be appropriate spaces. Other than that, it really is along this front face of the building, we keep all of these people away. And then also, there's 22 spaces here to maybe split in half between 77 and 55. Also have the two parking spaces here, which would be ADA accessible and another ramp. One of the challenges with this site is that you have to have your slab up about three and a half feet off of the finished surface. So right, right here, this pavement or this, this driveway elevation is about three and a half feet lower than the slab of the building. That's so that you can get the tractor trailers to back in, just kind of offload without having to change elevations. And that's why we had, have to have these ramps and stairs at each entrance point. So I think that's kind of the basic approach.
Now, did you file for the Loma because the site was above the flood level elevation, or was it because the buildings were going to be above the?
We, so what we did is, we, we looked at the flood insurance rate maps.
Yeah.
And it just wasn't consistent with our survey. So when we went out, in this location, they defined the flood elevation an actual number, right? Some, some elevations is just this general area, but when we tied in and we did our survey, it indicated that it was further down along here. And that's kind of important, right? Because then all of a sudden, your entire parking lot and all your buildings are outside of the floodplain.
It's going to cost you insurance-wise a lot more, too.
Absolutely, right. Because if you get, if it just touches a corner here, they can pull you in if you have a mortgage. So none of the, I don't believe any of the existing buildings were in it, but they were very, very close to it. So we just, you know, sometimes it works in your favor, sometimes it doesn't. This time it did, and we wanted to memorialize it.
All right, good. And then you are, you've been employing a environmental engineer to kind of oversee the, the work that's being done. So I really have no, no issues, Mr. Chairman. I think it was well thought out, and like I said, it's a great opportunity to improve that site. And in the grand scheme of things, it's really not far from Rogers Street, so improving the streetscape, as soon as you turn down Phoenix Ave, you're actually visually, that's going to impact you. So good. Thank you.
Caleb, any question?
I, I agree with Mr. Fischette that it's a great improvement. And I also noticed, I live not too far from there, but on the other side of the wetland. But there's also like a foot truck down, down the, your neighbor, that this, you know, is the Chowder company, I think. So I think alongside with the Hanaford customers, that they would appreciate the improved streetscape alongside all the workers that who are, who've gone down, worked on that road. I have a question on stormwater plan. If you can go over it a little bit, because I see that some of the drainage seems to me maybe bypassing the, the storage, the underground system. So I just want to see, like, actually interpret, how to interpret correctly.
Yeah. Yeah, so I guess, I guess the easiest way to explain this would be, this is, this is essentially an inflection point in the parking lot. Anything on this side goes toward the wetland. Anything on this side goes out towards Phoenix Ave, and that's less area that currently goes out there. So everything from here over and everything else on the site gets captured either by one of these subsurface systems, right? Here and here, or it's gets captured by one of the four or five other catch basins and then routed into, it's a chamber, a hydrodynamic chamber, which pulls out sediment as long as it's maintained.
I see.
Carefully or regularly. So we actually have two of those. We have one here, and we have one there. And those get sized based on the amount of pavement that discharged toward those. And there'll, there's an operations and maintenance plan with the drainage design that will require those to be, to be vac-trucked out every six to 12 months.
Okay, with the filters.
Yeah.
Yeah. So my understanding is then, then with, how do you call that chamber? Past that, that chamber, it will flow out to the, the wetland, right? But then overall, the site improvement will reduce the amount of outflow, so.
Yes, right.
So the concept is that, like, you capture part of it or detain part of underground, but which reduce over amount, but there is still amount that will.
Yeah, there is. So, so generally, we never eliminate the flow, right? So our, our goal is always to make sure that we don't increase the flow off-site.
Yeah.
And so we did that by reducing the amount of impervious surface. But then we also capture, each one of those roof areas get, and it's, you know, I'm going to visualize, it's 40 percent of the site is the roof areas. Those get put into perforated pipes to recharge into the ground.
I see.
And that helps to eliminate some of the flow, reduce some of the flow and comply with the standards.
Okay. And what is the equipment or behind the big building?
Yeah, so, you know, this has come up so many times, right? But, but the idea, this is only a 12-foot-wide ribbon of pavement, but the buildings are plus or minus 40 feet high to the, to the top, right?
Yep.
So we didn't originally have it on the plan, and Ed indicated, well, what if we have to do something back there? Whether it's change a light, whatever it might be, right? So we wanted just a lane that we could get a man vehicle back there to, to access the building. So there's no parking proposed here. If one guy came in here and parked, you wouldn't be able to get through, right? It's really just to provide access to the back in case they wouldn't need it. There's no proposed garage doors back there, so.
Okay. How about the stormwater thing? Is that a perforated pipe?
Yes, yes.
Oh, okay.
It is, I think it's a 24-inch.
Okay.
But yeah, essentially, it's a 24-inch pipe with holes in it, wrapped and crushed on, and the idea is that, you know, the, the first flush of water that comes off here goes in there and then drains into the ground.
I see. Okay, well, I trust the stormwater team is, you know.
Yeah, yeah, and we're working with them now to make sure that they're good, so.
Wonderful. Thanks for your explanation. I think, let's see, one more question about regarding the LFP, as the contractor who oversees, like, in case of there's contaminated materials. Understanding correctly?
I think that's a fair assessment.
Yeah, with regards to the, I understand phase one and two.
Yep.
You have done the investigation, so there's nothing required, but just in case. It's more like a just-in-case thing.
It is, yeah, that's what it is, because, because of the results of the phase two, said that the site was essentially cleaned up appropriately. We don't need to have it, but there could be, you know, I mean, we're going to move a lot of dirt around, there could be something there. We thought it made sense to have somebody on the team.
So I suppose that person will oversee in case there's something suspicious, then you guys will implement the.
Yep.
That soil management plan. Otherwise, just help me to understand, otherwise, is the soil management plan kind of just as a backup? Is not really in use unless there's?
Yeah, I mean, we, so, so we've done probably a dozen test pits and maybe another dozen oorings for the buildings themselves. And while a lot of the material on site is fill, which you would assume, right, 50 years ago, they probably filled a lot of this, and that's how they developed sites back then. There was nothing that indicated that was contamination that we saw in those 24 holes.
Okay.
Yeah.
Thank you. Yeah, I have something related with my previous job of those phase one and two assessments, so.
Yeah, yep.
Thank you for your explanation. And I, I think that Attorney Gary already covered all the comments, and I'm satisfied with them, so I have no more questions. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Caleb. Can you tense that?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Being a new member of the planning board, I very much appreciate the presentations. All of the presenters were, were excellent, covered all the points. I do wish I had talked to one of my planning board members before I went to the site. I didn't realize I needed a four-wheel-drive vehicle to get to the back of the site. It was, I was mudding when I, when I went out, but obviously, this will be a great improvement for the area, especially like the landscaping plan. I think it, it adds value to the property, no matter what. One question on the pedestrian, it looked like you had a couple of pedestrian walkways from 55 to whatever that back building is. Why doesn't it go straight up and then, like, it looks like I have to walk 50 feet instead of 10? And I'm just wondering, you see that, that one that's crossing? Yeah, I'm wondering why we're crossing that way when, you know, you're, you're in the line of fire for far too long of a period of time. Why wouldn't it just go straight up?
Like this?
Yeah.
Oh, right. So real, honestly, the difference is the impacts within that 50-foot, right? The impacts associated with the wetland area there, that's why we didn't do that. So we don't anticipate a lot of pedestrian traffic from the front to the back, but what we wanted to make sure is that we provided an accessible route, right, that made, that met ADA requirements. We don't necessarily anticipate people coming from here walking back. That's, that's not the idea, but we want to provide access if it's so needed.
Okay. What makes it difficult to go straight, straight, straight up?
Well, you can see this area right here.
Yep.
We actually have a retaining wall along here, so that we, we impact as little as possible up against the wetland. So if we were to come straight across, we'd probably lose a couple of parking spaces and/or have impact closer to the wetland. So those were the challenges we were considering.
Okay. Through you, Mr. Chairman, to Attorney Geary. Attorney Geary, you mentioned that this wasn't for manufacturing use, it was actually for industrial storage. Is that correct?
Correct, yeah. So the, the notice that went out to a Butters indicated manufacturing garages, you know, it's a general term, but the intent of the use is storage facilities for industrial equipment and associated office space.
Thank you, Attorney Geary. As far as we're mentioning, we're trying to keep visitors to the front. Is there any way, and you guys would know, is there any way to put signage up that, you know, this, you know, whatever that driveway is, that it's basically for employees only?
Yeah, I don't, I mean, that, that wouldn't be a problem, so we could, you know, we're going to mark those two parking spaces as employee only.
But just, just so they know that, hey, listen, we don't want people traveling in the back and coming in contact with large vehicles.
I mean, I suppose we could, we could put a sign, you know, as you enter, as you get close to the courtyard area, you know, employee area only, something to that effect.
Yeah, I was just thinking on the driveway, you know, you, you, authorized personnel only, you know?
Yeah, beyond that.
Couple of signs that way there, you know, as they go forward, they know, hey, listen, visitors can't park out back. It's just a suggestion.
Yeah, there is some parking along the.
Yeah, there's five and seven spaces out back, but those are going to be probably for employees.
Yeah, not, not for visitors or customers, correct.
Yeah.
So that, I mean, that, we could do that. We could do, you know, authorized personnel at a, at a certain point.
Just a suggestion.
Yeah.
I, I really like the plan. I like what, what they're doing with the area, and I hope it's not three years.
Yeah.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. I believe we have Mr. Lockhart on Zoom. Richard, any questions, comments, Richard?
Yes, I have a couple, Mr. Chairman. But first, I'd just like to say the same thing that everybody said about the site. This is a great opportunity to improve the site, the landscaping and nice-looking buildings. It just really looks good. There's two questions. I have one, and I know you've said that you've approved all the questionable items, but I'm looking at a memo of Joseph Caddy, the engineer, dated February 7th. He's got nine or 10 bullets that are going to have to be complied with. I just want to run by that, run that by somebody to make sure they're in compliance and agree to those points that he has brought up.
Yeah, Mr. Lockhart, we have received and reviewed those comments from the engineering department. We have no problem complying with all of them as a condition of approval.
Very, very good. That's all I wanted to hear. The other question I have relates to a January 24th, 2024 memo from Civil Design. It's addressed to Francesca Sigliano, and on the back of the sheet, on the second page, there is a statement that Chappelle Engineering Associates LLC is currently conducting a study on potential impact at the intersection of Route 38 and Phoenix Avenue. I'd just like to get an explanation of what that is, and maybe a timetable or something relevant that would shed some light on what they're doing.
Sure. So we did have Chappelle Engineering Associates do a review of the traffic impacts, and we submitted a letter dated February 8th to the board, which you should all have. The, the long and short of the letter was that there's no, no impact to the traffic during the peak periods at all from this site, and that parking is more than sufficient. So that was the summary of her letter. I think she indicated that 19 fewer trips are expected while during, during the weekday PM peak, and 44 fewer trips are expected, are expected during the weekday AM peak period. So that was the summary of the, of the report back from Chappelle and Associates. I believe the city's transportation engineer reviewed that and had no issue with it.
Oh, I understand that. All right, very good. Thank you. That's all I have, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Richard. I just have a couple of comments. Well, first of all, I'm, I'm happy that Conservation Commission approved, therefore we don't have to worry about any of the wetlands, so I have no. we don't have to worry about any of the wetlands, so I have no concern about that. I did speak with Dylan today after looking at your, um, fire wrap radical, um, submitted, and I know we didn't get a letter from the fire department, but Dylan told me that he knew that you've been dealing with the fire department, so could you comment on that?
Yes, we had a, uh, in, early on, we had a department head meeting, and, uh, one of the, one of the, I think Lieutenant Crabtree was present at the meeting, and, uh, he, he had no concerns with our plans at that point in time. Uh, they have access to, what, three sides of the, of the buildings without any issue whatsoever, so I imagine that's why there's no response. I, I followed up with Dylan as well to see if there was any reply, but, but there wasn't. You know, he, he indicated that as long as they have access to, I think it was a couple of the sides, they would be good with the plant, with the plans.
Thank you. Frank, do you know where the closest hydrant is anyways on Phoenix Ave? Anybody know?
I did, Jim.
I'm just curious. I'm, it, just curious, I mean, I didn't look close when I was down here today, but now that we're talking about it.
I don't recall seeing.
Yeah, but, I mean, but, if the fire department is fine with it, no?
Yeah.
I have no problem with it, so.
Well, the buildings will be sprinkled.
Oh, that was my next question, okay. The building being sprinkled, thank you. What do you plan to do with your, um, waste material off, to get it offsite?
I think we have a dumpster pad, uh, provided for on the site plan.
Okay.
So.
So one dumpster pad would be enough for whatever you have in there?
Uh, there's a dumpster area.
Yeah. Yeah, Mr. Fischett just found the hydrant, well set.
I have a picture of the hydrant.
Yeah, well set, yeah. Yeah, we've had some other development down that way, so we're all set on that. So the one dumpster pad you feel will be sufficient for your materials on the site? Okay. Okay, thank you.
They found the hydrant. Yeah.
Yeah, I see, see all that heavy equipment in the back, you're like, where's some of that stuff going, yeah.
You'll see that as far as the dumpsters go, you have one dumpster, three a year, a second year, and then after.
So they screened the dumpsters, I take it, they'll be, the dumpsters will be screened? Screening?
Yeah, so the, the, the city requires that the dumpsters are screened, so we'll ensure that that happens.
Okay, yeah, that they're screened in, okay. And I did have, uh, one question, Attorney Gary, um, you did a good job going over all the comments, um, from Dylan, if we could just go to the last comment, he has a question about, um, to prevent any leaching or runoff from the stockpiles, it would be recommended that the soil is stored on a cupboard to ensure the pile is secure, so I guess?
Is, is that the de-watering comment?
Um, this was on Chief Design Planner, number 18, on the, when you read through staff comments.
Yep.
They were talking about, um, the applicant tends to manage soil during construction.
Yeah, so, so we, again, we hired, um, the, um, the licensed site professional
Yeah.
To be, to, to get involved once the construction starts.
Okay.
And to, that's, you know, when, at that point in time, that's when he will prepare the soils management plan.
Okay.
It's a little premature for that at this point.
Okay.
But once, once they get underway at the site, he'll be involved, he'll prepare the soils management plan so that any soil that's coming offsite or staying on site is, is properly addressed.
Okay, so basically, yeah, so you have no problem with what that comment 18 is suggesting then, right?
We don't, and, and we did submit that letter, the follow-up letter from the LSP, um, and I, I, you know, more importantly, I think the chief, um, environmental planner was okay with it.
Okay, thank you very much. Those address my concerns, thank you.
Thank you.
So just a quick question to Dylan. So Dylan, so I know from our advertisement, we have the site plan and the special permit, and then it also says we, there was, to have another special permit to increase the maximum curb cut, but since there's no curb cut there, do we still have to act on 6.110? Uh, that's something the staff would recommend that we do, even though the curb cut is not to be increased at this time because there's no curb cut on the site?
I'm not certain if it has to be acted on, I, I suppose since they applied for it, it would have to be acted on by the board. Um, we don't feel that it's necessary.
Okay, so you don't feel at this point that we need the 6.1, as Attorney Gary said, to increase the curb cut because there's no curb cut there now?
Yeah, based on our view of it, it's the, the whole street is basically a curb cut, so they're reducing that.
Okay, so basically then we're just looking at the one-site plan and the one special permit for the construction, near the wetlands?
Yes.
Okay, thank you, Dylan, appreciate that. Okay, that answered my question, so what we're looking for is the one-site plan and the one special permit.
Mr. Chairman, can I just clarify
Sure.
A few items? So Dylan, I just want to make sure, we have not received anything in writing from the fire department, is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay. And have we officially received stormwater management approval?
We haven't received a, an official.
Okay.
Okay.
Just want to make sure that the corporate
Yeah, we, we don't have, we have, we're not there yet, but we're working with them.
Yeah. Do the special permit first? Sure. Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion to approve the, um, the special permit with the following conditions. The applicant should restrict the two parallel parking spaces for employee parking only. Uh, applicant should receive final approval by the City of Lowell Fire Department. Uh, the applicant, although, uh, was not in the original proposal, as indicated this evening, they'll, they'll, um, engage a licensed site professional, we'll make that a condition, the applicant will employ a licensed site professional to oversee, uh, the proper handling of material during the demolition and construction of the project, and the applicant shall obtain stormwater approval from the Lowell Regional Wastewater Utility. Now, uh, to, uh, Member Tanza, did you want to make that, I know you suggested, did you want to make that, just a suggestion, that's fine, that would be the conditions, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, so we have a motion on the floor for the special permit, do we have a second?
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to add one more motion.
Yes, go ahead, Richard.
Uh, that the applicant worked with DPD on the landscaping plan, to be more specific about what goes where and the number of shade trees.
We, I, I think, yeah, it's pretty comprehensive, but we, we can put that in as a standard in case there's a steel made as to what, what's happening.
I'm sorry, what was it?
Just, uh, final, uh, work with DPD to finalize the landscape plan?
Absolutely.
Yeah, that's fine.
Yeah, that's all.
Go ahead, Richard.
Yeah, that, that's the only one, I'll second the motion.
Okay, so, um, as amended, the motion was amended to include, um, the landscaping plan for the applicant to finalize the landscaping plan with, um, staff, okay? So we have a motion made in second, all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Chair, both chairs, any opposition? Hearing none, so that motion carries, five in favor, none against, so now we need a motion for the site plan. I'll make a motion for approval on the site plan with the same existing conditions that were just laid out for the special permit.
Second.
Second by Caleb, all in favor, say aye?
Aye. Aye.
Any opposition, hearing none, that motion is approved also for the site plan, five in favor, none against, we wish you well, good luck.
Thank you, thank you for your time.
You're welcome. Good luck. Okay, moving along on the agenda, the next matter we have is a site plan review and a special permit for 408 Suffolk Street and 585 Market Street. Donk Inc. Corporation has applied to Lowell Planning Board to construct a 33-unit mixed-use development at the above address. The subject property is located in the urban mixed-use and multifamily overlay district slash mid-rise zoning district. The proposal requires site plan review approval from the planning board per Section 11.4 for the development with more than three residential units, and a special permit approval from the planning board per Section Article 12.1 for greater than 11 units on one lot. May we hear from the applicant, please?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. My name is William Martin, attorney, with offices at 491 Suffolk, uh, 491 Dutton Street here in Lowell. Uh, as you said, Mr. Chairman, in the announcement, we propose a 33-unit residential development with, uh, some yet-to-be-identified commercial uses on the first floor. Commercial uses would be about 6,500, 6,600 square feet on the first floor. Uh, we're here seeking site plan approval, uh, although we did apply for a special permit, subsequent conversations with staff advised we don't need that special permit, that this is a as-of-right, uh, development in the transportation overlay district. So, uh, we were trying to be cautious and applied just in case we needed it, but we don't think we do. This project is proposed to be developed by the same, uh, group that develop, is, uh, underway with the Acre Crossing Development at the other end of this block at the corner of Cabot, Market, and Merrimack Street. Those folks are here tonight, uh, the developers are Will Soucy, Don Garcia from, from Donak, and John Bell, they're here, the architect on the project is Phil Tebow, um, local architect who's also here this evening, Hancock Associates, the project engineer, Brian Gudrow, and Russ Tedford, and Steve Jankus is a consultant on the project as well. So, uh, all, all of those folks are here tonight, and we're all available to answer questions. Uh, we also propose that this project would go through the same, uh, state financing program that the Acre Crossing project went through. This is, um, the Mass Housing Commonwealth Builder Program, which, uh, provides subsidies for units and makes them affordable, uh, and these would be homeownership units, uh, same, Acre Crossing is also homeownership unit, so, as everybody knows, this is a neighborhood developed, uh, there's a lot of, um, rental units, uh, but these are proposed to be homeownership. We do have, uh, we do have a staff, uh, comment letter with a, a number of comments, uh, I would just point out, uh, a few for the moment. Number 10 indicates the project use is allowed by right and is the type of development that the overlay district is designed to encourage, so we had that very much in mind and tried to design the project, uh, consistent with the transportation overlay district. Comment 13 says our proposal meets the goals of that district. There are a number of, uh, recommendations and questions about design, um, Russ Tedford at Hancock will take us, uh, through those, we've redesigned, uh, the project in a number of areas to address those comments. Uh, one I would like to just, um, note because it does come up, uh, in several of the comments, and that's about, um, whether we intend to close, um, Suffolk Street, and that's, um, our project's not dependent on that, uh, does not call for Suffolk Street to be closed. The board is likely aware that there's a Mass Works grant, uh, as part of the Acre Crossing Development Project with sidewalk improvements, and I think the city, uh, intends to apply for additional Max, Mass Works funding to continue those sidewalk improvements, uh, down, all the way down Market Street to Suffolk Street. Um, I think one proposal that's under consideration by the city is potentially closing that end of Suffolk Street, not the Merrimack Street end, but the Market Street end. But we are, I, I guess, we, we wouldn't object to that, but we don't require that for this project. Um, it's pretty much dependent on the Mass Works funding and what comes through, and we've had some comments that it might even be more advantageous to close Hanover Street on the other side of the canal, uh, instead of this part of Suffolk Street. So, I think all of that, we're willing to cooperate and, um, work with the city on, but it's not required, uh, as part of this project. So with that, I, I think I would, um, like to ask Russ Tedford from Hancock to, uh, take, take the board through the design a little bit and show where we've made changes to this design, uh, in response to comments from, uh, the staff memo.
Good evening, um, again, for the record, Russ Tedford with Hancock Associates, uh, project civil engineer on this project. So, uh, 585 Market and, uh, 408 Suffolk Street are actually two, um, separate parcels intended to be commonly owned and absorbed into one parcel. The total lot area, 14,310 square feet. Uh, in the existing condition, uh, there is a, a convenience store, a barber shop, and another vacant use, um, located kind of starting at where the, the build, proposed building is, up Suffolk Street, and then about, probably about halfway down Market Street. Um, and then to the left of that, it is in an abandoned parking lot driveway use, uh, it's, uh, in disrepair, it's sort of tough to tell exactly, uh, what was there previously. So, just for reference, um, the Acre Crossing Project is, uh, to the plan left, uh, that's the northerly portion of the lot. Top of the plan, we have commercial as well as residential uses, uh, to the right is Suffolk Street, which, uh, runs alongside the Western Canal, and then, uh, Market Street to, um, Plan Bottom, uh, which is the, uh, west side. Uh, so the site generally slopes, uh, from the rear and, I guess, side lot lines down to their respective streets, uh, the elevation drop is, uh, not too much, about elevation 47 in our northern corner, um, and drops to about, uh, 42 to 41 at the street level there. There are existing utilities located in both Suffolk, um, and Market Street, that being city water and sewer, as well as, uh, private overhead electric. And then just wrapping up into what our proposed project is, so, as mentioned by Attorney Martin, um, the first floor is intended to be about 6,600 square feet of, uh, retail commercial use. Uh, it does say 7,500 on our plans, but we've since updated to reflect, uh, that change. And then above that, in the three stories above us, uh, is the 33 units totaling four stories. As, uh, noted on this plan two and mentioned by Attorney Martin, uh, the streetscape along Market Street was, is part of a Mass Works grant project, uh, applied for by the city. That delineation of that project limit is shown on our plans, it's just left of the retail entrance, um, and it, as part of a, a city engineering comments, they've asked us to replace the remainder of the sidewalk along Market and Suffolk, um, to the end of our project limits, uh, so that's reflected in this revised plan that you see today. So the, in the existing condition, there is no stormwater management on site, uh, runoff from the roof areas, uh, assumingly just flows down onto the sidewalks into the combined, uh, stormwater sewer system on both these streets. As a way to mitigate, um, stormwater to meet both local and state regulations, we are proposing an underground infiltration system, um, to the left of the proposed building in what our pocket park is there, uh, we, we install and propose these systems, uh, pretty heavily, and it's, um, with the intent of kind of, uh, making this, uh, we're calling it a pocket park to the plan left here, um, as usable, um, as possible for passive recreations to residents. Um, as you can see, the pocket park here is a, a walkway along with some benches and tree plantings, um, uh, to, basically create a nice place for residents, um, to enjoy the outdoors. Uh, so, one comment from, oh, and I guess, uh, dovetailing on stormwater, we have met with Lowell Regional Wastewater, um, they do approve of our plan, um, it is a similar, proposal that we have for the Acre Crossings Project, um, and they are, uh, in agreeance with our stormwater management approach, and, uh, in agreeance with our stormwater management approach, and it seems like they have no further comments from there. We received several other comments from city engineering as well as planning. Rather than go through all of them, be happy to answer any questions that the board may have on it. I will say that just one comment that is easy to go by is they mentioned to move any of the main entrances from swinging out into the sidewalk, that being the retail entrance on Suffolk Street, as well as the residential entrance on the corner there, the intersection. We have since set those back a few feet in order to make that swing work and not impair any sort of pedestrian traffic that might be out there. And I believe that's it. City engineering had some other comments that we've asked for a general conditional of approval, that being, you know, site inspections for the stormwater management, as well as other utility work that may happen within the right of way. But yeah, that wraps up my presentation. I'd like to turn it back over to Attorney Martin.
Evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. My name is Philip Tebow from Philip Tebow Architects with offices in Drakeatt, Massachusetts. A little explanation about the building itself and some of the floor plans. The first floor is going to be mixed-use with retail, commercial space of some 6,600 square feet. The remaining space is going to be dealing with some of the public spaces for the, for the residential development. So, we'll have community rooms, we'll have entrance vestibule, mailroom. We'll also have elevators and stairway with their machine room. We do have a trash room that is internal to the building. We have a utility room that's for electric water and sprinkler and unit storage for the residential units. On the second, third, and fourth floor, we'll have 10 units each of one bedroom and one unit of a two-bedroom. So, again, the total unit count would be 31-bedroom units and 30, and three two-bedroom units. The exterior of the building will be, on the first floor, a very traditional sort of use where we have storefront systems along Market Street with some opaque paneling around the storefront systems themselves. We'll have a central entrance into the retail building because of the slopes of the sidewalks. So, we'll have essentially one main entrance into a retail space, and then we can split off into different suites if it's so-called for rented that way. The main entrance into the residential will be on the corner of Market and Suffolk Street. So, it'll have a large pillar in the, in the front corner with windows looking into the main lobby and an entrance door essentially to a sidewall that will bring into a vestibule, mailroom, and then into the main lobby itself. Market Street hosts the other items that I had talked about, trash room, utility room, and storage. So, those storefront systems are essentially being contemplated as being opaque at the moment. The upper floors are going to be a stucco finish with masonry pilasters at intervals over, over a sign band across the, on the second floor, and then on the, at the fourth floor level, there's another cornice band. And at the roof level, there'll be some paneling again and some architectural metal coping. The units themselves will also have door units rather than windows, and so we'll have like a Juliet balcony for each of the units with railings for protection and such. That would be both on Market Street and, if you want to call it the rear alley on the opposite side. Along Suffolk Street, there will be windows that will be opening into bedroom units and kitchen areas and such. In the middle of, of the layout, on the second, third, and fourth floor, there is, it's, it's a wide corridor with what I would probably call a mini atrium with a skylight system that runs across the entire length of it. And so, on the southern end facing Suffolk, we do have curtain wall that will provide additional light going into the space. I believe that's it. So, I will turn it back over to Attorney Martin unless there's other questions for me. Thank you.
So, I guess the only, only thing I would point out regarding the design is, I think all, it's, it's fair to say that the redesign plans that were submitted are responsive to pretty much all the comments that were raised in the staff memo, but there was an additional comment that we received later today about glass, whether there'd be glass on the Suffolk Street side of the first floor, right? That those are, so we are open and, we, the plans don't quite show that, but we would be open to a redesign so that there'd be glass-type, they're not all entryways, some of them are just, one is for trash removal, others are just windows into what is the utility room and storage area. But if, if the board's so inclined to require those to be made of some sort of glass material, that's something we're willing to consider. I mean, we're willing to do.
Thank you, counsel. Anybody else on behalf of the applicant? If not at this point in time, I'll open it up to the public. Anybody here this evening like to speak in favor of this project? Anybody in favor? In favor? In favor? Hearing none? Anybody in opposition? Just come to the microphone, please, and state your name and address.
My name is Jeremy Coombs. I'm here with my wife. We live at 432 Suffolk Street. We were referred to by the architect as the back alley. I think that's very telling. We are, this is only the second week that we've known about this project, and we're actually pretty upset about the way that it has been communicated to us and also about its impact on our yard. Basically, everything about this project is harmful to our property. We would be losing most of our light. We would be, there'd be a 6,000-square-foot wall directly behind our property, two to six feet away. I don't really, I don't have the dimensions. I'm sorry, I'm not versed in this. The light would be, this would be the light where the Juliet balconies are supposed to be planned. That would be 600 square feet of glass directly reflecting light into our yard all morning and then blocking out the light in the afternoon from about 1:00 on. I used a web tool like sunlighttracker.com or something like that, so I'm not going to swear to the, the total accuracy of those numbers, but the impact is basically that we will be in shadow almost all of the time once it's past noon. The area is notorious, as I think all of you know, for drug use and prostitution, and when we looked at the plan, we saw that there were large, the spaces that you're referring to, you might consider adding windows. That's where we have a lot of street noise and a lot of street traffic, and we are very versed in picking up all the materials related to the vice activities that happen out there. Until today, we thought that was where the pocket park was going to be. We're really glad to see it's not there. We don't know much about the drainage, but we did know that we, until we saw this plan, the only porous surface that was adjacent to the building was our backyard, and so we're very concerned about the runoff into the backyard. The 18 French windows, French door-style windows with the Juliet balconies will face directly into our house. We will have no privacy. There's not a single inch of the backyard that will not be visible to almost all of the residents. Most of our house is built in kind of like a railway style, so you'll be able to see from those windows directly from one side of our house to the other. That's bathroom, bedroom, kitchen, living room, dining room. All of them are going to be on display all the time. In addition to that, I will be looking, if I stand on my back, my back porch, I will be looking directly into 18 windows. I don't think I'm creepy, but, you know, I would like to hope that somebody who is moving into one of the properties would know that about me, because it would be kind of scary to see a dude standing in the front of his backyard, in his backyard, looking toward you with nothing to do but kind of stare in your direction. We are not convinced right now that there is enough attention that is paid to the Suffolk Street area. We are worried about the impact on traffic, whether or not the road closes. We understood that there would be, and I can't remember the, the exact comment, but it was something to the effect of area will be left for Suffolk Street resident to access their garage. We didn't know what that meant in terms of city planning or in terms of the park or whatever was happening, but we would like to know more about that. And basically, we just want to say to the board tonight that every single piece of this diminishes our quality of life. Every single thing about this project is harmful to our use of our backyard and the interior of our house. At no point were we consulted about any of this or approached until a week ago, and I don't know if that's protocol around here, but it, it just kind of sucks, because we were really excited to live in the acre, and at this point, we're beginning to think about moving out. Thank you. Thank you for listening, and I'm sorry to approach you in this manner.
Thank you, sir. Anybody else like to speak in opposition? In opposition? Yes, just come to the microphone, please, and state your name and address, please.
Hello, I'm Hannah Coombs. I also reside at 432 Suffolk with my husband Jeremy. I would like to have more information about the pocket park, the pocket park pathway that connects, I believe, if I'm looking at this correctly. It appears to create a corridor between the property, the proposed building and our property. Our property line has a brick fence that's about seven, seven feet tall, and so I'm really concerned about the width of that, that pathway and just how dark and enclosed it is and the likelihood of it attracting like vice behavior. Currently, there's like a broken gate between the existing building and our property line, and there's a mountain, a mountain of like empty liquor bottles, nips, broken vape cartridges, syringes, all sorts of things that are just spilling out from over there. Whenever there's a wind, it blows down our street, and we are left picking it up. So, I'm just concerned that with high walls on both sides, there just not being enough light or public access to deter that kind of behavior.
Anybody else like to speak in opposition? In opposition? In opposition? Hearing none? Does the applicant want to make any comments in regards to what the two speakers just spoke about? Have any questions in regards to that?
So, thank you, Mr. Chairman. We, I did receive the letter from the abutter late, late today, you know, 4:00 or so today. So, really didn't have a chance to reach out to these folks. However, based on their comments, you know, it seems like they're in opposition to pretty much every aspect of the project. I don't, I don't see how if we did this one thing or that one thing, that, that they'd be satisfied. So, this is a project, for the most part, it's designed in compliance with zoning, and we're open to try and work with people to make them satisfied, but I'm not seeing, you know, a lot of room for, for compromise here. I think it's, it's the, you know, the project is designed this way, you know, to take, take advantage and really to produce more affordable homeownership opportunities in the neighborhood, and, and this is what we think is the best way to do it. And if it doesn't, if it impacts that property the way they describe, I just don't see a way to address all their concerns.
Thank you. At this point in time, I'll turn it over to the board members for any questions or
Mr. Chairman, if I may?
Yes, Mr. Fisher.
So, first of all, I certainly aesthetically like the way it looks when you take into account the Acre Crossing site, and I know Mr. Jankis is here, and you've got to admit it's a big improvement from the dormitory project that was being proposed. And that was a battle at this board, and we took a lot of heat for that, but obviously, I think this is, this is an improvement. My expectation would be, though, from like DPD is, especially under the new zoning requirement, where we're not requiring any parking in these areas, and as a matter of course, even with larger projects, I would have, I would have liked to have seen, and I saw the response here, kind of like, you know, well, we'll give it to DPD, but to have a transportation management plan presented with the application, you know, that would be something the board would be looking to, understanding that, you know, this was, this was, the new zoning was put in place to really create some housing and understand the critical mass that we're looking to really develop in the downtown to hopefully even support downtown businesses and services. But obviously with that, and especially, this is the first project under the new zoning as well, so it would have been nice to have a transportation management plan that presented with the application. Also, usually with typically, now, there's no parking on site. Unless I missed it, was there any plan to have any bike racks?
Yeah, so when, when you say transportation, do you mean traffic?
So, no, typically what we see in these larger projects, especially where parking is limited, it's actually, it's almost like a packet you can give even to the tenants, and it denotes, I mean, it outlines bus services that are available, other modes of transportation, amenities that are available within walking distance, but it's really meant to be a comprehensive approach to what are the alternative modes of transportation that are available to the tenants within the building. I think we had a project on Middle 6th, they're actually going to have in the lobby, you know, screen that gives you kind of bus schedules and BTA schedule, but that's, that's typically what we look for is a comprehensive.
So, so there are LRTA stops in this, you know, at, at the property nearby. There are bike storage areas in the design. So, we have taken those things into account. I mean, if there's not an articulated plan, but those elements are present.
Right. But typically, it's not something unusual that, that I'm asking for. I, I, actually, I would have thought DPD and the discussion would have, would have asked for that to be presented, engineer commented. Yeah. And they can give you the blueprint, really, that we, we typically would like to see. And the bike racks are going to be on the first floor, is I'm assuming? Believe it or not, we've had some proposals where they weren't exactly on the first floor.
Yeah, no, they're on the first floor.
Suffolk Street, if, because trying to avoid visually, you've, you've created obviously the visual effects, so it's not a solid wall, but it really would be, I think, a nicer effect on Suffolk Street if we did have the glass. But I'm just curious, from what you've indicated, the rooms behind there would not be conducive to have glass, or what?
So, yeah, I mean, I get, there are things we can do. There is a, I think, a trash storage area there. There's a community room now on the first floor that was, I guess, more in the central part of the building because it's more convenient to the access, right? If it's a community room, people are coming in that don't necessarily live there. But that could be put along Suffolk Street, right? So, that, that would be a use where you'd have windows that would.
I was going to say, that would probably make meetings in the, in that room even a little bit pleasant.
Right. So, so that is, that's certainly, as I said, well, that's something, again, that we redesigned didn't accommodate, and that comment came late today, but that is something we're willing to do.
And that could discourage some activity along Suffolk Street that wouldn't be so favorable as well. So, it is, you know, you can see into the building, so. And is, so it is unique. I feel, I feel for these folks over here, because they're, they're, they're right in that, that spot. I have to ask, the question was a pathway of, so if you could just give some detail... I have to ask, the question was the pathway, so if you could just give some detail, the distance, and what is the pathway between that abutter's property and this property? What is going on there, I guess, as far as the site?
So, so the zoning requirement, when you're against the residential uses, is five feet, right? So as originally designed, we were less than that, we're going to seek a variance for that. But in response to the comments, the building's been redesigned. We have a little bit, I think it's maybe 5.3, something along, it's, so it's compliant with the zoning, but it's, it's five feet. And I don't, I don't know what, they describe it accurately, there's a wall there.
Right.
I don't really know what's on the other side of the wall, their yard. I don't know how much between the wall and, exists between the wall and their house.
Right, right.
You walk by there, you really can't see, it's seven feet tall.
Yeah, no, I'm familiar with it, no. Now, I did look at the zoning ordinance, and again, this is the first time we're applying it. So, and I didn't see it in the packet, and I might have missed it, and I guess the only thing is, is that I know it's from the building's perspective, and you look at the units that are affected, and I think it's very clear what it says, unless I'm missing something, Dylan. I think it's section 9.8.6, and that would have been number five, which says, "Sun and shadow sites in buildings shall minimize shadows on residential uses in public open spaces. Applicants shall include a shadow analysis with before and after scenarios. The analysis should consider shadows on three representative days of the year. For each day, the analysis shall consider those shadows occurring each hour between 1.5 hours after sunrise, 1.5 hours before sunset. The results will be evaluated according to the seasonal reach and uses impacted. Preference shall be given to the planting deciduous trees on the southern face of the building or outdoor area to provide shade in summer and allow sunlight to filter in the winter." I mean, that's in the ordinance, and it says shall, so I'm just curious if DPD had any conversations with the applicant on this? And bear in mind, this is the first time we apply this.
So we didn't have a whole lot of discussion. I think we did apply for waiver for that provision.
I don't believe that was communicated to the board, but...
Well, I think that is an important analysis in this case, since you have butter that specifically have that concern.
Were there any discussions on this, Dylan, at all with DPD, within the staff?
I wasn't in all of the discussions. I'm not, I don't believe this specifically came up.
Okay, okay. And then the, I do like the park area or open space. I think that's going to be very complimentary with what's going on, the abutting property. And obviously, there'll be plenty of cooperation between both sites, I suspect. So obviously, that's, I do like that. So not a lot, I just, I would be looking for, obviously, the glass on Suffolk Street, I think probably moving the rooms around would, have the community room, I think would be helpful, would satisfy that. And as I said, I would have liked to have seen a transportation management plan, and more or less, the components are there, it's just, it's just something that is really put together so that it is, it's comprehensive, and you're able to give it to the tenants. The whole idea is to make sure the tenants are aware of it, and to be able to use it.
So it is, it is something in the DPD requirements of something that we would submit.
Right. All right. I'll wait to hear the comments from the rest of the board members. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Fischett. Caleb?
Yeah, I concur with Mr. Fischett that like a traffic management plan, or traffic demand management plan, it's kind of become a typical thing, particularly when there is no parking spaces provided. I know you are not required in this case, but like, I think it would be very helpful, and DPD staff have good examples of that. So I would also support Mr. Fischett that like you work with, to perhaps condition, you work with DPD to come up with a plan that is, that will help the residents to navigate perhaps a carless lifestyle, or they can use car share, but just not having their own cars. Or if they so do want to, at least they know where to find parking, I suppose. So that's, that I think, I agree with Mr. Fischett on that one. And as I had, kind of get a little out of my turn here, there. I think that the shadow analysis is important, and like, I don't think a waiver will be the best one to give in this case. And I said, the reason is because like, one of your abutters specifically is concerned about that. So I think we ought to look at, and the board ought to evaluate that element. And I also share a concern about the alleyway. I think it's similar to what staff is commenting on Suffolk Street, when you have transparency, not only looking into the building, but you have people looking out of the building, that what the urban planner, Jane Jacobs, have said, that you have eyes on the street, and that's when people feel comfortable, and then also like, also deter criminal activities. And I have some concern especially about the alleyway because of, there's no windows, there are two high walls next to each other, and the design of your parking park happens to be one way in, well, and then the one way out of the alleyway, so it becomes kind of a circular thing. And I'm kind of torn whether that is a good thing or not a good thing. I think it really depends on the design of the alleyway, but I feel like at this point, the alleyway is kind of like there just because of the requirement, and I mean, it's good to have some separation, but at the same time, like, how do you, how do you, as we, as planners and like, activate that space to make it part of the park, for example, instead of like someone can do more shady things back there? I think that's something needs to be thought out a little bit more. I'm not against like, you know, the concept of the park, nor having alleyway there, but I just think that, just like the Suffolk Street, how we could improve the streetscape with glass, I feel like the alleyway need more thoughts as well. Whether you have perhaps some transparency to the tenant space, since you have a commercial space there, so that at least someone who would like to hide there will think twice because there are people looking, right? Or like, even circulating back there. And about lighting, I think that's the least we can do, I mean, since you, you are complying with zoning, but like, I feel like that is one element that can be improved upon. So that's my thoughts, and so I will, I will see what the rest of the board wanted to say.
Thank you, Caleb. Mr. Tenza?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Through you to Attorney Martin. You mentioned before that this is a potential way of getting homeownership, and are these going to be condominium units, or are they going to be rentals? What's the idea behind it?
So, no, they're intended to be homeownership, right? For people that qualify under the Commonwealth Builder Program, it's a mass housing program. So, yeah, would be condominiums, and you, most for people that make 100% of area meeting income. So there are different price levels set by mass housing, depending on family size, if it's a two-person household, three-person household, these 31-bedroom and three-two-bedrooms, so. So, but it is homeownership.
All right. One of the things they mentioned was you needed some variances regarding setbacks and corner variances. What is the status of that?
So, we are scheduled to be at the Board of Appeals next week. We actually applied to them first, but they couldn't hear us until later. The main variance is for corner clearance, which the transportation engineer has commented he has no concern about. There's also a variance request for loading area. We don't really know what the first floor use is going to be.
Sure.
That's, you know, that, again, that's sort of a city request that there be commercial uses on the first floor. So we have designed the project to accommodate some commercial uses, but don't have that user identified yet. There may be a use that triggers a loading requirement, and so we apply for variance for that.
Attorney Martin, does, does your, does the applicant want to see Suffolk Street? What is their feelings about Suffolk Street? Apparently, there's comments that we should discontinue a portion of Suffolk Street.
So, you know, how do we feel? I think, we don't think the project can support the cost of a park there, right? That just raises the cost for, it makes it less affordable. So we're open to the concept, if the city has a way to make a park there, we think it would be a benefit, a potential benefit for the neighborhood, and we don't object to that. But we really don't have the budget to design something there, and build something there, and maintain something there. So it's got to be mass work supported, and make, and I think the city staff is considering, you know, is that the best spot for it? Should it be the other side of the canal? Should it be done at all? But however it ends up, I think we're willing to work with what the city comes up with on that.
Well, and as a, as part of the city, we appreciate you and the applicant wanting to work. I would agree with the glass on the side of Suffolk Street, it just will, will be better. It'll, it'll look better. I agree with the comments as far as the pathway. I think there's a couple of things that need to be done before I think this board should vote. I think, one, there should be, Mr. Fischett had mentioned some sort of transportation plan. I'm at awe that this zoning allows 33 additional units with no parking. It's, but that's the zoning.
Right.
That's the city. So I think it would be extremely helpful if that, one, was done. Two, I think it would be very helpful, and I think it's required by the zoning book, which I just received today, and Mr. Fischett was kind enough to point out that 9.8.6 does require it. And I think we need to receive that shadow analysis. I actually thought that, while I agree with you, I think some of the comments by the opponent to this project are, they really don't want it. But there are certain things, I think, that probably can be done to minimize the impact and keep them as homeowners in law. Losing light, I can't comment on it. Maybe that shading plan, or whatever that, whatever Mr. Fischett mentioned would be helpful. I certainly think on the backside of that building, depending on where the sunlight is, is potentially non-reflective windows. I mean, if you have a bank of windows with the sun beating down on it, you could be in, you know, that line of fire. And I think there needs to be a plan regarding that back, that alleyway. That just seems to me that I would want, I would want those things before I voted on this.
So could I just, that, that could be gated, it could be lit? I mean, is that the type of thing the board is, would consider, as making it more secure, less of a pass-through? Is that what you're talking about?
Attorney Martin, I have no clue, truly. I mean, I'm just thinking about it here for the first time, so without thinking about it, or exploring it with maybe the Department of Planning and Development, maybe they can come up with some alternatives, so less shady activities are going on.
Okay.
Anything else, Dan? No? Okay. Mr. Lockhart?
Yes, I have a couple of things, Mr. Chairman. First of all, the transportation demand management plan, I think is a critical component that will add enormously to success of this project, so my colleagues have all spoken in favor of it. I think it's very, very important. The second thing is, could somebody expand on the trash and recycling handling within the building, and how you plan to handle that?
So the question is, how are you going to handle the trash and the recycling on site?
So, trash would be brought, brought down to the trash, essentially the trash room by the residents on, as they needed to, and then they would be put into dumpsters that could be wheeled out. I believe we're planning on four-yard dumpsters. There'll be a series of them, so they can be brought out whenever the truck, the refuse trucks are coming. They would be essentially dumped, and then they would be brought back interior to the building.
So is that going to be picked up by the city, or picked up by private?
I would imagine that's private.
Private trash pickup?
Private.
So that means that each individual unit would get something to put their trash in?
So they, yeah, it's, no, it's, it's a kind of dumpster situation, right? You have your bag of trash, you bring it downstairs, and you throw it in the receptacle, and then however often it needs to be emptied, it's emptied.
All right, that's all. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Richard. Appreciate it. Yeah, I just have a couple of comments. I mean, as indicated, this is new to our zoning, and as Mr. Fischett pulled out, we shall have the shadow plan, so that's something I think that we have to act on one way or another, so we should, if you could put that together, I think we should definitely have that. And I think, you know, as Caleb brought up, with the back alley, if you could look at ways to incorporate that to make it look safer, you know, with planning staff with that. I think planning staff also indicated that they'd be willing to work with you to help maybe put some shade trees on the lot. They made a couple of comments about that. And what was the other one? And obviously, you need the approval of stormwater.
So I think we've, on stormwater, Mr. Chairman, we do have had conversations with the utility, and they're in agreement with our plan.
So what we usually do is, we usually do a conditional approval that you get stormwater approval permit, which you need even if we don't make that condition. But usually, when stormwater mentions that to it, we usually try to address it, yeah. Yeah, I mean, I was looking at that before, was the applicant should plant some shade trees where feasible, particularly to screen any mechanical equipment, dumpsters, and DPD can work with the applicant to select trees and finalize plantings. And I think, yeah, and this indicated the, the city... Um, and I think, yeah, and it's indicated, the, the city engineer, um, with, uh, number 39 on his comments is, uh, "Traffic management plan is to be submitted to and approved by the city's transportation engineer." Um, and as indicated, um, we've done that on a lot of projects. It just tells everybody, you know, um, how to get to the surrounding areas, like, you know, like indicated, transportation by either, um, bus or how to get to the, um, train station, uh, where city parking garages are and what's laid out. Some do it by pamphlet, as Jerry said, some do it by sign in the lobby. Um, you know, it tells new people, basically, um, how they can get transportation in the city. And, let's see, we've done that a lot where there's been limiting parking, for sure.
So, we fully expect to, to do that.
Okay.
Um, I guess I, we, I had understood that that would be a condition of any approval, but am I, am I to take it, you wanna see that?
Just, counsel, my, my thinking is, again, this is the first project that comes before the new zoning where there's no parking at all required. I, I think it would be incumbent upon the board to see that. Um, we're not the experts, but, I mean, obviously, we've
Fair enough.
Yeah.
Okay.
I think that's why they, the, the engineer suggested that it be approved by the traffic and transportation, I mean, excuse me, city transportation engineer, so, um, so basically, I guess the board has three concerns, the transportation management plan, the shadow analysis, and the alleyway. I think that sums it up?
Mr. Chairman, there was mention of runoff.
Oh, the water runoff?
The runoff from the building. I don't know which way the water's gonna run, how it's gonna go, um, but I, I think that would, uh, would be probably something else that might be addressed in the Stormwater report, or, I'm, I'm not sure, but, um, I will say this, I really like this project, all right? So, Attorney Martin, do, do not take this as something where we're saying, we don't like this.
Yeah.
We just think with a couple of, with a little rework, um, we think it'll be a better project.
Right. So, just for your, we do have a, a good handle on the runoff, right? There's underground system underneath the park, um, and we looked at even ways to make it more, you know, eco-friendly and, and recharge, but then that takes away from the use of the property as a, of a, as a park. So, there have been discussions with the wastewater utility, and they're in agreement with our approach. So, um, I hear you loud and clear, but I think we've got a good handle on that.
May I add a few comments?
Sure, go ahead, Caleb.
So, um, let's see, uh, I think, first of all, uh, I, I know you were talking with, uh, Mr. Tenzar about, uh, the alleyway, so, uh, I, I, as I said before, earlier, I don't know, I'm torn whether you wanna block it or not block the alleyway. I feel like that's something that you would like, uh, might consult with DPD, but maybe also, uh, the police department, as they have my best practice on alleyway. I know Low have plenty of alleyways. Some are really, like, popular, like the, I think, Water Way, Water Street Way, that's not too far from there, behind, uh, University Crossing, and there are others. And so, like, if the best option is to close it off, then, then that might be the best alternative, but I, I, I hope that you can get, um, expert opinion, uh, to help you design that, that part of that, uh, you know, the project. Uh, I think you should look at it together with the pocket part, because, uh, otherwise a one-way pocket part in, it's also could be a concern, uh, to me. I, I think they should be, look at it together. Um, one question about the pocket part, I see a square on the lower left, um, what is that? On the lower left of the pocket part? With, with
Uh, it's a transformer.
It's a transformer?
Yeah.
Okay. So, the transformer will be in the front of the park?
Right.
Okay, um, well, it's
And there'd be opportunity for screening or, or whatever, but
Okay.
That's where it goes, right?
I, I, I understand
National grid kinda doesn't negotiate.
Yeah, I understand, but at the same time, I mean, it, it does also block part of the or the park, and if, you know, again, I think, I feel like that should be part of the, the, uh, analysis on, on the design, you know, how do we, if the concern is about crime and shady things, I think that, that should be a focus on, uh, of your design as well. I understand there are other needs that need to be met, so I hope you can do a, uh, productive analysis on that one. Um, secondly, I understand, like, um, while we're talking about the shadow analysis, now the fact is that if you don't change your roofline, the shadow is going to be that much shadow, unless we move it somewhere else in the world, so that the sun is at a different angle. So, um, just suggest, this is a suggestion, that you might reach out to the butters to figure out, maybe there is anything that can be improved. I understand that may change the building design, so, uh, this is just a suggestion, so, so that when we come back to look at the shadows, then we can have, uh, also more productive discussion, other than, well, that's what it is, so, uh, you know, we only have one option, or, you know, that's how it is, and too bad for the butters, you know? If there is any, uh, I would say, room for look, relooking at that, so.
We'll certainly look, although, as you say, unless we're gonna change the positioning of it on the earth.
Yep.
We're, we're limited.
And, and I recognize also that the zoning does allow you on that building mass, but how, I know there is many architect techniques that can help with shadows, as we have learned from bigger cities. Uh, I think Low is dancing up, so I think that will also be something that will come back and recurring to, to our board as well, so we just want to highlight that because of the, uh, you know, the, uh, the recent zoning changes. Um, and I'm gonna leave it at that. Thank you, Chairman.
Thank you, Caleb. So, it sounds to me like we might be leaning towards a continuance.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, could we request a continuance to the next meeting?
Sure. Let me just, um, check with Dylan. Um, well, first of all, two things I usually ask is, one, how much time would you need to go through what we've suggested? And then I check with Dylan to see what our available schedule is, so. So, while he's looking at that, do you know how much time would you, applicant, applicants?
I mean, I'd, I'd like to try for the next meeting. If we, looks like we don't make it, I could always, you know, report to staff that we're gonna need additional time.
So, how far about, what do we have available, Dylan?
Oh, the, every meeting's available. We only have one item on the agenda on March 18th, so.
I'm sorry. So, what's available, Dylan? I'm sorry, I didn't catch that, the next one?
March 18th is available.
Okay.
There's only one item.
So, can you have it by March 18th?
Wait, um, yeah, we
I mean, the main thing is to get the stuff done, get it to all the, to get it to all the staff members, have them comment, bring it all back before us. So, you basically have less than a week to give it to all of them, have them comment and get it back to us.
So, we, we'll try to make that, and if it looks like we're gonna need more time, I, I'll keep in touch with Dylan, but
Sure.
If we, uh, our request would be to continue to the 18th.
Okay. Yeah, so if you need more time, wanna let us know, and you can send a letter to him, and then we'd have it on the, um, agenda with the request for the continuance.
Okay.
So, um, is
Motion to approve the request for continuance?
Okay, we have a motion from Attorney Tenzar to continue the matter to our next meeting on March 18th.
Uh, Richard.
Richard Lockhart, second to matter. All of the favors, say aye?
Aye.
All right, Chair, vote yes. Any opposition here, and none, so the motion carries to continue. Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you. Continue to that date. Thank you. We're just gonna take a two-minute break while we're waiting for the next applicant to get ready? Yeah, that's
[inaudible]
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 How you doing, kid? Hanging in there?
[inaudible]
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 Thanks for your comments on the job, I'm sorry.
Yeah, there you go. You got more hair than me, too. Take care.
Okay, we're moving along on the agenda. The next matter is a site plan and special permit for 81 School Street. Kenneth and Melissa Lanier have applied to the Low Planning Board to construct three townhouse-style residential units at the above address. The property currently contains a single-family home, which will remain. The subject property is located in the traditional multifamily zoning district. The proposal requires site plan review per Section 11.4 for a property with greater than three residential units, and a special permit approval per Article 12.1 in Section 11.3 for property with four residential units. May we hear from the applicant, please?
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Kenneth Lanier, Conestown Land Associates, representing Kenneth Lanier tonight. So we're before you to move forward with this proposal as you had outlined with a site plan approval, as well as two special permits, one being for the number of dwelling units exceeding two or more. I think we used to call it the old neighborhood character special permit. I'm not sure if that's still how it's lined up. And additionally, having that number of units in the TMF zone. It is a traditional multifamily zone. The actual address is 81 School Street. You might know it as the property just after the Pawtucketville Pharmacy, just outside the intersection there with Pawtucket Street. The parcel itself does have an existing single-family. It's located just right up against the roadway. It does have a retaining wall with two driveway entrances to the property. One entrance is to the north that accesses a single-unit, one-story garage. And in this particular proposal, we're actually going to be removing that garage. So the house will remain as it stands. That bricked garage area and the associated concrete driveway with that will be removed. The driveway to the south that gains access to the rear of the existing single-family will remain and will continue to be utilized for that single-family in the proposed development. The meats and potatoes of the project would be entering in just north of where that existing concrete driveway and garage is currently. We will not be adding any additional curb cut openings here. It's just relocating the one that is associated with that single-unit garage area. Therefore, we do not believe, and I think DPD agrees, no additional variance would be necessary as we're not extending the amount of curb cut for the particular property. The access to the rear of the lot on this new driveway will be a 16-foot-wide driveway. It will reach the rear of the parcel at about a 6% slope on the proposed driveway entrance, and then a 4% to 2.5% slope up near the three new townhouse condos that we're looking to construct at the rear of the parcel. In this particular layout, there's no requirement for any variances. The site itself meets all of the required zoning items as far as setbacks, usable open space, landscape open space, curb cuts, and number of units dwelling per area. We are looking to construct three-story townhouse units. They're 21.5 feet wide, 34 feet deep, approximately just over 1,850 square feet. The garages themselves are single-story garages. They will have two vehicle park spaces in front of them. So we're over and exceeding the required parking limit for this particular development. As you can notice on the site plan, Mr. Chairman, we are proposing some retaining walls. As you folks may realize, if you're facing the front of the parcel, you can see there is an existing stone masonry retaining wall. We'll be cutting into that and extending that retaining wall up onto the site. At no point do any of the retaining walls reach a grade higher than four feet. So they're all not overly structural supporting retaining walls. They're more for us to be able to just cut in that driveway and get us back to the level area at the rear of the parcel. I had the opportunity to contact and discuss a number of items with this project. Dylan at DPD has been excellent working with us on this development. We did receive comments back from the fire department that stated that they were comfortable with the project as designed. We did receive initial comments from Liz, the traffic engineer for the city, that had some concerns with the entrance where it was located. And we did make revision to that, to what it's currently shown before you folks, and eliminated her concern with any site distance as you're entering and exiting that driveway, going, looking to the north where the intersection is, as well as looking to the south coming down the hill. She has also provided Dylan with a letter saying that she is comfortable with the development. Lastly, we did have the comments from DPD, which really didn't have any, I guess, overreaching comments as far as any concerns, just really outlining the project in general. And we did provide all of the utility information that the engineering department was requesting. Lastly, we had a pretty good sit-down with Stormwater. Mike Stewart and Gordon over there at Stormwater, really great to work with here at the city. They really understand the drainage and work with the applicants to try and achieve what we would hope would be to not really cause any effect to any of the abutting neighbors, but in the same respect, not provide any additional runoff into the city lull right away. And in this case, we were able to achieve that. We are providing rooftop recharge for both the existing dwelling as well as the new dwellings. And that will all be handled in underground chambers. Those chambers are the Kultek Recharger 330s. We're proposing nine of them in total. One to handle the single-family roof runoff and eight to handle the roof runoff and parking area from the new condominiums at the rear of the parcel. We've provided snow storage area. We've provided a private trash pickup for the units in the rear. The front unit would still handle their trash right along the edge of the roadway with curb pickup. In addition, we've shown sewer water and gas coming into this parcel, which all fit and have been reviewed with the appropriate utilities. And we feel as though that this particular development is in kind with the rest of the neighborhood. There are several multifamilies, both to the south and to the north across the street, and we think it'd be a good fit in the neighborhood. We did have an opportunity to meet with the neighbors, actually earlier today. Great group of guys. There was one concern, which was really just how we were going to kind of buffer and screen the backyards of the new condominiums to some of the abutters on Wana Lancet and also the direct abutter to the south. And we're amenable to putting up any type of fencing that I can coordinate with the abutters in that particular sense. I didn't show fencing on the plan. It's not necessary or a requirement. We did provide landscaping, but I would agree with the abutters that I don't have a problem proposing fencing. I'd work it out with them. We can say chain link with slats to give it that privacy, but if the abutters want us to go with vinyl, I don't have any problem with that either. So I'm hoping that answers a majority of the questions and going over any of the comments. And I'd be glad to answer any additional questions from the board members at this time. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. At this point in time, I'll turn it over to the public. Anybody here who wants to speak in favor of this project? In favor?
Good evening, I'm John Sumis. I have the property directly across the street at 84 School Street. Couple of months ago, I came here in front of the other board, and I wasn't in favor and I wasn't opposed. But after speaking to the engineer, a few issues were answered. They went from four units down to three, which is a good thing. And a lot of other issues were addressed, and I'm very satisfied with everything. So I should hope that the board passes this, and I think it's good for everybody, and it's a win-win.
Thank you, sir. Thank you very much. Anybody else like to speak?
Good evening, Mr. Chair and the board members. My name is Walter McGrail, owner of the 89 School Street property, which is a direct abutter to 81 School. We were in, as John indicated, we were in a couple of months ago, I guess, when we first were aware of this project. There were some questions. Mr. Lanier was agreeable to listen to us at the meeting. He did contact us recently regarding the changes that we had requested or brought forth and seemed to have met the requests as we had presented to him. So we are in favor of the changes that he's made, and as a whole, we're in favor of the project at this point.
Thank you very much. Thank you.
I'm Henry Kuhazik. I own the property at 9492 School Street. And Ken has done a wonderful job with his revision of his plans. And he wants to accommodate all of us abutters, so it's aesthetically pleasing. And thank you for allowing me to speak.
Thank you. Anybody, at this point in time, anybody else want to speak in favor? Do we have anybody on Zoom, Dylan? No? Anybody in opposition? In opposition? In opposition? None? Well, first of all, I applaud you three for sitting through the two first public hearings meetings.
Thank, thank.
At the end of the night, you come in and speak on behalf of the applicant. I mean, not a lot of people do that. They get up and leave in the meetings. But I give you a lot of credit that comes out and speak in favor. I really do. It's not easy sitting here on this side of that. I give you three a lot of credit, I do.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. And Mr. Jim, just to clarify one thing, maybe I didn't bring up, I should have, they brought up. We did apply for variance for this particular project back in October. The meeting that these gentlemen were speaking about was we showed up in front of the zoning board of appeals. We were looking to get one more additional unit, which required us to have dwelling unit per area variance and then an open space variance. But after having the discussions with the abutters, these gentlemen specifically, I didn't feel as though it was good for the neighborhood. These guys were great. I wanted to work with them. So we took that unit out, reworked the site so that it was acceptable at the entrance, and then, you know, was amenable to them for the buffering and screening with the units in the rear. And I think we were able to come together and create a much better project. So that's where that prior meeting comments had come from.
Okay, thank you. Thanks for clarifying that.
Absolutely.
Thank you very much. So at this point in time, I'll turn it over to board members?
Mr. Chairman, if I may?
Sure, Mr. Frichette.
So Ken, first of all, it's nice to hear how responsive you were to the abutters.
Yes.
You know how nice it is to see a project of this size come before us and doesn't have a list of variances that somebody's trying to get? So I wish more developers would kind of take that approach. And sometimes it's a numbers game. I understand that. But it really is nice to see something at this scale. It seems like everything at this scale is requiring variances. They're not requiring it, they want to get the variances. So I give you a lot of credit for that. I really don't have a lot to say. I think it looks great. You know, I'm familiar with the area. I used to be a barber shop right there in that building on School Street attached to the Pawtucket Pharmacy.
Yep.
My mother used to drive me there to get a haircut. Though I know the spot very well.
We won't ask you how much they were back then.
Yeah. And just a couple of things that DPD did comment, and I guess I would be just looking to say you'd work with them for landscaping. They did comment about possibly indicating like tree plantings.
Yeah, we, Mr. Frichette, we had shown, and I know it's kind of awkward. I mean, there's a little legend down there at the bottom. So we were anticipating on planting an additional four deciduous trees and 10 total shrubs. But I have no problem working with DPD to come up with a plant selection.
Yeah, whatever works with that site. But I know we're trying to incorporate it. Just even aesthetically, it's going to be even nicer.
I mean, there is that one large tree in the front that I was hoping I wouldn't have.
Yeah, I know, it's a mature tree that's, I hear you.
You know, with the entrance being moved to where it is, we're going to have to take it down. But I'd like to.
But honestly, a tree that size is probably safer to have it out of there.
I would agree. I would agree.
That's great. And then sometimes with these standing condition, I mean, obviously, you're going to do it to make it work as the removal of the snow if you can't store it on site.
Absolutely.
But obviously, that becomes more of a logistical necessity anyways. I'm assuming these are going to be all three condos that'll be.
That is correct. Yep, yep.
Great, no, again, applaud you for listening to the abutters. Like I said, it's just nice to have a project come before us that doesn't have variances. Would you be amenable, because you did offer it, and I would not, but just to provide, you provide some sort of screening for the rear of the property and whatever that turns out to be?
Hundred percent.
Whether in the form of landscaping or fencing.
Yes, sir.
And then we did get, which is nice, we did get the email approval on, from the transportation engineer, as you noted, and also the email on the Stormwater approval. So the only thing is, I would just, again, final approval from the fire department on.
We received that as well. Did we get anything, Ryan?
Fire department said they had no issues. It came in an email from Dylan yesterday.
Oh, all right, so I must have missed that email. We got them flying all over the place. But if somebody saw the email, then that's fine.
All right.
All right, so I'm good with that then. All right.
Mike Dylan, you can back me up on that?
Yep.
All right, I'll go with that.
It just came in, it was piggybacked on a lot of the other stuff, and it said, "Fire Department response." When you dropped down, it said, "We have no issues."
Right, great.
Instead of printed it, I wrote it on my agenda.
Oh, great, thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, thank you. Caleb, questions?
I don't have further questions. Looks great. The plan looks great. I'm, again, give you props for addressing the abutters' concern, and I don't see any problems other than those that are already addressed. Thank you.
Excellent.
Attorney Tenza?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Through you to Mr. Lanier. Where is the garbage area?
This would be a private trash pickup for the condominiums in the rear. So they'll just have regular bins.
Yep.
And they'll be picked up on their specific day for pickup. I figured the front unit could also be included in that, but they're so close to the roadway, and they already have barrels being picked up at that point, so that front unit.
So it's not going to be public?
Yeah, no, sir.
Okay. Just to echo Mr. Frichette's concerns about the landscaping, the plan that I have, and I don't know what version it is, but it says two trees, deciduous.
Yeah, it was, it should be four. There's four symbols there, Mr. Tenza.
Would love to see six.
Yeah, you want to see six?
Would love to see it.
All right.
And look, if you can work in some trees in the back, too, that would be awesome.
Six is fine. You can make that a condition, absolutely.
I like the proposal. Thank you.
Mr. Lockhart, any questions, Rich?
I have a couple of things. I'm in favor of the project, I think. Ken, I appreciate your efforts to bring the neighborhood and the abutters into the decision process. That's very important. I want to make sure that, it was pointed out in memo, that the development is within an area that is, makes shade trees free. I mean, you can just get them. It's the DCR company that you need to coordinate with so you can maximize the number of shade trees on the property. That's really all I have.
Absolutely, Mr. Lockhart. Thank you very much.
You know, one of the comments from staff there is the property is located in the Greening Gateway City's Free Tree Planting Zone.
Yes.
I think Richard, I think Richard's replying to that, yeah. So you can coordinate with DCR to plant shade trees on the property.
Right, that's a lot.
I'm completely amenable to that, absolutely.
Yeah, I'm glad to see the three units instead of the four, to be honest with you. And especially when you have support by the neighbors, that goes a long way with me. You know that. So I have no problem with the plan. Thank you. So also, so what's requested the board? We're looking for, he needs the site plan and a special permit? It says, yeah, right? Yeah, because he has three on, for four residential units. Okay. Oh, so I see why. The one comment you said, he said one time, it said five.
Yeah.
But it's four, I think five was only one before the ZVA. Yeah, and get back to transportation engineer. She said she was fine because you're dropping the height of the wall, right down to two and a half feet.
She did, yeah. So her major concern is we have that driveway much closer to the left-hand side because the original application for the ZVA, when I, prior to meeting with these folks, had that driveway way left, I was keeping that garage for that single-family house, which, you know, he was just keeping it. Then there was concern from DPD, talking with Pete and Fran, that then we'd need a variance for the driveways. So it just made sense to work with Liz to bring that driveway over, eliminate that curb cut, and get that wall to grade down so you don't have a vision issue when you get to the end of the driveway.
Because you're really close to Pawtucket Street, right? They come in on the School Street.
They come up that hill fairly quickly.
They come up there quickly, correct.
So it's good to have that. So that wall now cuts in. Originally, it was just straight across, and it could have provided an issue view. But now it cuts in, you know, approximately 12 feet and then heads up the hill. So you get that additional area that will be much lower than the two and a half feet we had originally proposed there for the wall. So she was comfortable with that. I think DPD was comfortable. I think it works much better for access to the rear for everybody.
Okay, thank you. I'll make a motion to approve this site plan with the condition to work with DPD for, on the landscape and the trees, with a minimum of six, I believe I heard. And second one to be to screen in the rear of the property either by trees or fencing. As, and you can work with DPD as well with that. Any comments, any boards, any other conditions?
Mr. Chairman, I would just mention, because only it was even just commented in the staff letter that the board may wish to require applicant remove any snow from the site, which will not be stored on-site. We've made that as a condition before.
Any snow to be moved, if required off-site?
And one more, Mr. Chairman.
Yes, go ahead, Richard.
That the retaining wall would not exceed two and a half feet.
You can't say that, I'm sorry. I mean, in some point, maybe up by the front of the road.
By the front.
It won't exceed four feet. But some of the wall in the back there does exceed.
This was for the sightline.
Yep, just that sightline in the front, absolutely.
So Richard, you mean the sightline where it's two and a half feet?
Yeah, in the sightline, yeah.
Sightline.
With the transportation engineer required? Okay.
Yes.
The retaining wall in the front for the sightline not to exceed two and a half feet as requested by our traffic engineer, or transportation engineer, I should say.
No, that's right.
So that's my motion for the site plan with those four conditions. Seconded? Seconded by Attorney Tenza. All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Any opposition here, no? So the site plan is approved? So special permit? I'll make a motion to approve with the same conditions as I just outlined on the site plan. Seconded? Seconded by Attorney Tenza. All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye? Any opposition hearing, none? So the special permit is approved as well. Good luck, thank you.
Excellent, thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, gentlemen, again. I really appreciate you coming down and sitting through the two meetings. I really do. I give you a lot of credit for coming down and speaking on your behalf of your neighborhood. I mean, that makes it so much easier for me when I see you guys say, "This is my neighborhood. I like it." We listen to you. Thank you very much. Thank you. Okay, moving along in the agenda. We have that coming up, so. Okay, move along in the agenda. Community Preservation Committee appointment. The planning board will appoint a member of the board to the Community Preservation Committee. The appointment will last for a three-year term. That's a result of Sinead leaving us. Unfortunately, she left us. So at this point in time, I know a lot of the board members have other committees they were on. So at this point in time, I'd be willing to appoint Allison Dolan Wilson as our planning board member representative.
I'll second the motion.
Motion made, second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Mr. Lockhart, yes? Okay.
Yes.
I know she's one of our new members, and a lot of times, the new members like to get on some of the new committees and explore the other avenues that the city stores for us. Any further members, many board members?
Mr. Chairman, if I may, at the last meeting, I know Attorney Tenza did inquire about the Rook Bridge. So I just wanted to give kind of a formal, because, well, it's almost a favorite of, especially, almost for political points, people want to take some pop shots at it. But it's taken a long time to get to where it is. But again, I've been on the advisory committee for, I believe, a decade, if not longer. But the advisory committee met on November 15th. That was the fourth meeting of the advisory committee. At that meeting, they gave the status of the project. And just from a timeline perspective, the project schedule, 2019 was design selected. 2004 to 2005 is design, build, and procurement process, and which means the design and the construction will move forward together. And by overlapping the work, it should progress quicker. With the idea that in the third quarter of 2025, we should see actually construction begin on the bridge with a completion date of 2028. And it was funny, shortly after last meeting that we had, I did get a notification that the next advisory committee meeting will be March 20th. So at that time, after that meeting, probably on the April 1st, probably appropriate, it's April 1st, I suspect, I will give probably an update from that meeting. But the full expectation is that, again, the funds are there. There's been press releases on this. You know, prior to some of the political, getting out in front of it, I was aware of this stuff already being in place. So I think it's moving along as scheduled, unless something is announced at that March 20th meeting to indicate some sort of a setback. So it's very, it's very real at this point, and I, again, means a lot to me because I've been involved with it for quite some time. But so that would be a report on that. Mr. Chairman, I'm happy to give just an update at the next meeting. Or I'm sorry, at the April 1st meeting, to give the update of the advisory committee meeting. And then one last item as well, just to reiterate, if anybody wants to come. And then one last item as well, just to reiterate, if anybody wants to come by from the board or DPD staff, but on March 14th, from 4:00 p.m. to 6:00 p.m., NEMCOG is having their open house for their new location at 672 Suffolk Street, Suite 100, and that's right on the first floor. And it's just for, just meet the staff, see the new office, and there's light refreshments will be served.
Thank you. So I just have one comment. The project, Dylan, that we approved for the Recreation of Melwanna on Rogers Street, so I know 38 was the state road, and we approved it. The state indicated that they wanted no left turn going out. So the applicant built these little humps, so they wouldn't turn left. They're turning left out there all the time. I go by that street a lot. I actually stop to let the people pull out because they're going there, and I get traffic behind me that are jamming on their brakes and tooting their horn at me, because I'm stopping, because if not, I'm going to hit the other car. People in the complex down below have indicated that they've seen several accidents there, and the police department have been there on several accidents. So it's, like I say, it's just a, it's no bigger than the speed bump, and they just drive right over it. So I wondered if we could speak with them, and there's like two of them, when you come out, and it says right there, "No left turn," but the sign doesn't do anything. I wondered if any way they could put like a standing sign, so they couldn't drive over it, saying, "No left turn," because that was one of the requirements, and everybody's doing it. A woman approached me, she told me, and her husband was an ex-police officer, and she said, "He's talked to plenty of officers in the city, and there's plenty of reports on fire with the police department for those people pulling out." So that's not working as we designed it. We were hoping that something would work better to stop that left-hand turn, but it's not working. And the state is the one that recommended, because that was Route 38, and they had jurisdiction over that road, so we could only go along with what the state recommended. So if we could speak with the applicant on that and say, you know, it's not working.
Yeah, I think, do you know if the speed bump is new?
I'm sorry?
Do you know if the speed bump is new? Then.
Nope, that's been there all along.
Okay.
So there's actually two of them.
I'll, okay.
There's that little small one, and there's another one. But I mean, they're only above the ground like about this much.
Okay.
So they had like a sign sticking in that area, so they can't run right over it.
I'll check in with the transportation engineer. I know this has come up, and I believe there is something in place to.
Okay, sure. I know we mentioned it once before when Fran was here, and I just happened to see it, again, just since the last couple of weeks, I saw it happening again and again. So I approached a little slowly, because I do travel Rogers Street quite a bit, and yeah, so if we can get any feedback on that, I'd appreciate it. Anything else? Many other board members?
Yes, I have an update.
Richard, go ahead. Yeah.
Mr. Chairman, the historic board has reached, I don't know, I call it an important milestone. On February 29th, February 29th, was the 40th anniversary of the historic board's first meeting. The board's state statue was approved December 13th, 1983. And the first official meeting of the historic board was held on February 29th, 1984. It's been around a long time. In total, it's accomplished an awful lot. I just wanted to point that out. Our next meeting is Monday, March 11th. Thank you.
Thank you, Richard. I appreciate it. I know, I got on the board in July 2nd of 84, and the third thing the other board members did was put me on historic board. So I'm trying to think if I was at that meeting.
When you're probably.
I'm similar thereafter. But yeah, they put me on there very quickly. So I'm trying. Saying that, I'll let that go, so. If no further comments, we can have a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Motion made, and.
Seconded.
Seconded, all in favor?